We'll be talking about cost centers, we'll be talking about programs, and all of these involve people. And we don't want to lose sight of that. We're going to be making some very difficult recommendations and some very difficult decisions for us. But ultimately, we have to remain fiscally solvent. So without further ado, we'll hand it over to the first one up. This is going to be Mr. Andy McGuire.
Good evening, everyone. For President Houston, everyone at home. So let's get started. So first, I want to start off by setting the stage for where we were in June when we adopted our budget for the current year that we're in now. And at that time, we were basing our budget and our plans off of the expected revenues that were in the state's adopted budget that was adopted in June. And so on the screen now, you see these are those assumptions that was in our multi-year projection, including the current year and the next two years. This plays out here, and this was our multi-year projection that was adopted in June here by the board, with all of the assumptions on the previous slide in there. The green boxes on the bottom of those two next two years, they signify that our ending balance was enough, more than what our required reserve was. And so in those years, we would be fiscally solvent. These are the updated assumptions that come from the governor's January proposal for this next year's state adopted budget for the 2425 fiscal year. You can see the current year, not much change there. But the 2425 year, the year that the governor's proposal was referring to, you can see that at the adopted budget, it was a 3.94% COLA was expected, and that's what we made all of our plans on. The governor's proposal lowered that to 0.76%. That change has a revenue impact, a negative impact, of about $6 million. The following year, in the governor's proposal, also downgraded that COLA expectation from 3.29 to 2.73. And you can see there, over $7 million impact now from both of these, the COLA from next year and the following year, have had a downward impact on our revenue. Also, here is continuing enrollment decline, but also, most importantly, our attendance, our average daily attendance rate. We expected in the 2425 year that we would have returned back to our historic low prior to COVID of 95%. Already in our first interim in December, we have brought that forward, reduced that to 94 from the 95% for the next two years. And we showed a chart at that time, and I have that same chart updated. We'll show later in this presentation of where ADA was at that time and where it is now at the end of January. Well, we'll talk more about that yellow bar later in the presentation. But for now, I want to show what the impact on the multi-year projection is based on these new assumptions. Now, first, we've added a fourth year, the 2627 year. And that is because when we adopt our budget for next year, that will then become the third year or the year that's used to measure our fiscal solvency. So you can see here, we have a lot of red boxes. These are all based on the assumptions like I just showed you on the previous slide, including the ADA and the COLA. In the 2425 year, in the 2425 year, that red box, that signifies, that's a negative $6 million. That shows that we're actually $6 million short of making our minimum reserve requirement. Furthermore, into 2526, that negative 17, meaning we're $17 million short of making our minimum reserve requirement. And then in the 2627 year, that goes up to $28 million that we're not making our minimum reserve by. And so certainly those years, we would not be fiscally solvent based on the new assumptions. And this is as it is now, without any other plans in place. Next slide is, of course, yes, we must make a plan now so that we can adopt a budget. We would not be approved by the county or state to adopt our budget with the deficits that you saw in the previous slide. And so the plan, as you see it here, financially speaking, and the work we have to do tonight is to determine what would be that plan to fill out those numbers. But in order to minimize any reductions that we may have to do in any given year, spreading that across all the four years, we've been working with our sites, our schools and departments to minimize any spending in the current year down to whatever's only what's necessary to get us through the end of this year. And we expect to be able to save upwards of $2.5 million in the current year. Every dollar we're able to save this year, next year, that all continues to roll through and provides a bigger ending balance in any subsequent year. So the more we save this year, the better the fiscal situation would be in the following years. Next year, in order to be at just below $3 million above our reserve, that 2.9 in the green box on the 2425 year indicates that with an $8.1 million reduction to our expenses next year, along with the current year's spending slowdown of $2.5 million, that our ending balance would be just about $3 million above our minimum required reserve. And then as you go forward into 2526, with a planned $3 million reduction of expenses, that would leave us with just over $1 million over our reserve. And then another $3 million in the 2627 year reductions would leave us with just $300,000 above our minimum reserve. So at this point, that sets the stage for the work we have to do tonight. And we'll have a discussion now about some of our data points. Dr. Philia is going to go over some of that. And then we'll continue to talk more about the financial impacts of these things.
Okay. As we are preparing for developing our LCAP for the 2425 school year, we have been gathering input from our various stakeholders, as we always do. And we've actually been encouraged, the participation rates that we've been seeing. We have our LCAP digital survey. And we had, to date, about 681 participants. We typically have about 400 respondents to that LCAP survey. So we're pleased to see more participation. What you see on the screen is some of the breakdown of the participants taking that survey, with about 44% being parents and guardians, and then about half, or 50% or so, being staff. Additionally, then, we also have some in-person opportunities to receive feedback. And that was from our LCAP community meetings. We did a presentation with our DLEC group, as well as our DAC group. That's, again, representatives from our, from families representing our schools, where they were able to participate in activity where they're prioritizing some of the action items to help inform our plans moving forward. We also have another open community meeting that's rescheduled for the 27th. And so knowing kind of the financial context, we did want to make some shifts in how we were soliciting feedback, in that we really wanted to focus on prioritizations. And so for our, and so for our first LCAP goal is to provide personalized, competency-based, authentic learning experiences to create a foundation for achievement for all learners. And so in looking at the results of that, we could see this, what's on the screen right now shows the survey results of the three most important services that were identified. Again, this is the digital survey with the 681 respondents, 50% staff, and about 44% parents. And so from that, you can see that there's clearly two top priorities there, and those are focused on intervention, both math and reading. For the in-person community meetings, again, the same question of those priorities. You can again see what came forward, clearly was interest in interventions for math and reading, as well as monitoring student achievement. For the second LCAP goal, we have to build a culture centered on whole learner outcomes, including engagement, social, emotional, cognitive, and mental health needs of learners. And so again, if you take a look at the survey results, you can see here that there was a high level of interest in having access to a counselor and social worker for mental health services, that being the clear priority. And then we, and then we also saw interest in that next cluster that included providing opportunities for music and art, PE, and STEM opportunities for students. So the same question, looking at those our in-person, DAC and DLEC feedback. Again, their top three priorities included exploring career opportunities, as well as an interest in having students, again, having access to a counselor and social worker, and again, addressing social emotional supports. For our third LCAP goal, ensuring enabling conditions are in place for a shared vision, enabling policies, resource allocation, trust, and safety. On the survey results, you could see here, clearly there is an interest in prioritizing behavior intervention. The other standouts are the top three there, protocols, tools, and communication to keep our schools safe, as well as interest in continuing full-day health tech support. For our in-person meetings with our DAC and DLEC group, again, a consistent theme there with the interests in behavior interventions, protocols for keeping our schools safe, and also bilingual family liaison who would help to facilitate parent workshops. We also wanted to be able to share some information regarding teacher input about the wheel. As of last night, we did have a survey sent out to our elementary teachers to be able to have an impression of their input and their feedback about that. So as of last night, we had 207 respondents out of our 488 elementary teachers. And in that survey, it was an anonymous survey. We asked just a few questions on a Likert scale, five indicating that they strongly agree, and one being that they strongly disagree. And so here you can see with this question, I have implemented new instructional strategies as a result of wheel collaboration time. And you could see here that for number four and five combined, that's 53.2, that marked that they agree or strongly agreed with that statement. 21.7 were neutral, and then 25% rated that they disagreed or strongly disagreed. For the, and the other question that we included here, my students have shown positive academic growth on formative assessments given as a result of wheel collaboration time. And so here are the responses. You could see 48.8 stated that they agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. 23.7 were neutral, and 27.5 said they disagreed or strongly disagreed. And I'll hand it back now to Andy.
Thank you, Dr. Philia. Okay, so as we saw in the multi-year projection, we have our unrestricted and restricted general funds. What you see on the screen now is actually how our unrestricted general fund breaks down. And so on the left here, on the gray section, that's the base. That part represents the base funding that our school district gets, any school district gets, the same amount per student in the base, regardless of the demographics. And then there's the supplemental concentration, which is derived by how many students we have in our unduplicated count, which is made up of our, related to something to do with poverty and homeless youth, English learners. And our district has an 80% unduplicated count. And then that results in the money we get for supplemental concentration. And so for a district that perhaps might have a 20% unduplicated count, we get more per student than do they. On the top of that, we'll talk about that in a second. Over here on the right is the, the blue bar represents what, when we work on planning for next year and what we need and what we can afford in our district to operate next year. All of those things are what we're calling base plus. And then left unplanned is about $3.9 million. That, that's the work that we're going to do here tonight to discuss how to plan for that amount of money. Over on the left now, that red section, that $5.8 million, that refers to the deficit that is equal to the deficit in next year's budget if we follow the plan of reductions, as I just, as I showed earlier, that would maintain fiscal solvency. So if we maintain a deficit of $5.8 million or less next year, we would then be fiscally solvent across our multi-year projection. Over here on the right, just to give an example of the dollar amounts we're talking about, our total revenue next year, between the base and supplemental concentration is $199 million, and our planned expenses, inclusive of the 3.9 unplanned, is $205. So what is base plus? What does that mean? Well, everything in base, and a lot of what we do as a district with 80% unduplicated count, really, most everything we do can be considered an increase of services. That is what the supplemental concentration dollars are for, for students that would be in that unduplicated count. But I wanted to run through, this is not in a list that shows, it's all-inclusive, but kind of just hits the high points to give some perspective on what would be in the base plus. So most all of our classified and certificated payroll is in base plus. Things like the utilities, other standard expenses for operating our facilities, those are in the base plus. It's in the base part of base plus. Our maintenance and special education contributions, which are actually shown in our multi-year projections as the contributions, that's money that we transfer from our unrestricted general fund into our restricted general fund, where the expenses live for our maintenance and our special education operations. There's the school discretionary budgets that's included in base plus. Here's another, these two next items are a good example of what is base versus supplemental concentration or supplemental services. As a school district, we're required to have a half-day transitional kindergarten program with a second adult in the room. And we're, we're required to have a half-day kindergarten program. In our district, we've elected to have an all-day TK program and an all-day kinder program with paraeducators involved. And so the half-day portion of it that's required would be the base operation. And then in base plus, or would it become part of our supplemental program, would be the other half of the day and the paraeducators and kinder. Also, there are some special education supports included in our LCAP and our base. Both of those things make up that contribution. We're required to have 180 days of student days of, of learning in our, in any school district in California. All of those are included in our, in our base. What's supplemental are all of the days beyond 180. For instance, our teachers work 187 days, and the seven days beyond the 180 would be in base plus. They'd be supplemental part of the base plus. Our wheel program is included in base plus. But an interesting point about that is that 60% of the cost of the wheel program is actually paid for by a restricted resource, Prop 28. And that was a recently passed voter initiative in California that dedicates an amount of money to every school district to provide an arts and music program. And so 60% of the cost of the wheel comes from that resource. The remainder, 40% of the wheel program, is in base plus. It is not a requirement for a district to provide technology to every student. We do. We want to make sure that every one of our students has access to technology. That is a supplemental service. And so the costs are leases that we have directly with Apple. And we do that lease so that we can spread the costs of those out over the useful life of that technology. That's included in base plus. Other things in base plus or in our supplemental program that's part of base plus would be the one social worker per school, our two counselors per middle school, a family liaison at every school. Our educational services supports are in base plus. And then other things that have been negotiated that are show up on our salary schedules, such as degree stipends, are also included in base plus. And like I said, this is not everything that's in base plus, but just some of the, to give perspective on what base plus means. So I'm going to pass it back to Dr. Philia, who's going to go through some things about what is not, or what our, what next year looks like.
Thank you. In light of our current financial state, we have had to relook at how we offer support and services. We have been fortunate, over the past several years, to be in a position to identify needs and then respond by providing supports. We are also so fortunate to have amazing and talented individuals who have offered their knowledge and their expertise all in the service of our students and in supporting our staff. But we know that times have changed, and with that, we are in need of restructuring. And so we currently have 19 instructional coaches that have been working with teacher teams and providing professional development to staff. Our proposal will be to reduce this number to maintain four instructional coaches with a focus on math instruction. These four coaches will be based at a specific school site where they will primarily work to assist and support teams in their instructional planning and collaboration. They will still offer some district-wide professional development, but on a much smaller scale as their primary, primary role will be to assist their assigned site. We continue to want to support our math instruction and maintain that focus. We have had a lot of time where we've allocated resources to a lot of professional development around ELA in the past, including our OG professional development. And so we want to be able to now continue to, to support math instruction. Additionally, we would want to use our ELOP funds to add two instructional coaches that will help support that ELOP programming as we continue to look at adding and, and really expanding that, the after-school offerings to be focused on academic intervention, as well as to continue in the STEM fields. As we also know, our, we continue to have significant needs to support our newcomer students. And so we want to be able to maintain and continue that support. And that coach continues to provide support to teachers as well as direct services to our newcomer students. In the area of our NETS program, or our new Escondido teacher supports, our induction program, we will also be seeing an impact to this team. As decisions are made regarding staffing, we would expect to have a reduced number of new teachers in year one or two of the induction program. And so because of that, that would then impact the number of mentors that we would be needing. So we currently have seven mentors that work with our, our new teachers. And so next year, the proposal would be reduced to three. In the area of curriculum, we also wanted to shift, we wanted to share a shift in the curriculum adoption plan. So as you know, the, the board, you adopted a new science curriculum last year. And the plan then was to implement, to purchase it this year and implement it next year. Due to the financial state, we are proposing to postpone that purchase to the 2627 school year. In the area of academic interventions, in the past and for several years, we have been in a position to have district-funded intervention teachers that were focused on ELA at our elementary and our middle schools. So we provided one intervention teacher. This current school year, there was the decision made to add to that. And so we had an additional intervention, one at the elementary level, and then two at the middle school level, and that was focused on math. So currently then, total for district-funded intervention for elementary, there would be, there's two intervention teachers. And then at the middles, they have three district-funded intervention teachers. For next year, there would be no intervention teachers currently budgeted as part of the base plus plan. And so again, this would be something up for consideration that will be discussed in, in the upcoming activity. For middle school supports, currently, each middle school has a social worker. And then there was a decision that was made last year to add a counselor. And so this year, our middle schools have three counselors at each of our, our middle schools. Additionally, our middle schools have two to three assistant principals. Specifically, we have two middle schools that have three assistant principals. So next year's proposal would be to revert back to having two counselors at each of our middle schools, and also to have two assistant principals consistently at each of the middle schools. Another area for consideration is the budget for VAPA programming. So again, we currently, this would not be in the base plus plan. And so this would be something for consideration. We currently have instrumental band with four elementary teachers. And so we also do have the wheel in place, and the wheel offers general music. The discussion might be that we would possibly incorporate or explore how to incorporate the instrumental band program or some version of it, perhaps through the wheel program. Additionally, there is the use of the CCAE facilities where we have our concerts, as well as the Smart Festival. And then what you see on the screen there are additional supplies that go towards supporting the VAPA programming across the district. For behavioral supports, specifically for general education. And so currently, what we have in place, we do have three behavior specialists, as well as additional support. We have six EUSD, behavior intervention technicians. And then we also have four additional vendor positions that are registered behavior techs. So that's what with the team that's in place currently. And so next year, we would propose to maintain those three behavior specialists and then just maintain five EUSD behavior intervention technicians. Another point of consideration has to do with our TREC and ALS, our TREC program and our ALC classes at each of our middle schools. So TREC is a tier-three intervention for our most struggling students that are struggling behaviorally. This is often an option for students who are on the verge of expulsion, or it's an alternative for expulsion, or maybe students returning from expulsion. Also, at our middle schools, we do offer an academy slash ALC class. The academy class is an elective class, and it's assigned as a tier-two intervention for specific students. And what's on the screen here is the enrollment number that's reflected of all of the students that are assigned to that class over the course of the six periods. And so the idea there would be that an example would be a class might have six academy students that's assigned. And then there would be space then for the ALC students to go in or out as needed. ALC stands for Alternative Learning Center. And that's a class that offers sites and alternative for suspension. And so if a student had, is suspended by a teacher, perhaps for a period, they would be assigned to that classroom. And then again, that allows for the student to stay on campus in a more restricted setting, but still having access to some coursework and some learning in that class. in a more restricted setting, but still having access to some coursework and some learning in that class. So it's a, an alternative, um, means of correction there. And so what's on the screen now just kind of describes the current model that's in place right now. And so it, you can see there that the academy class, there's one at each of the middle schools. And that consists of a teacher and a para educator. And then you also see the TREC program that has a teacher and a para educator as well as, uh, a one-point-eight, uh, position of a social wor- social worker that helps support those students as well. And then the associated costs are there also. And so here, what you would see is a proposal for a regional TREC program where you would just maybe offer two. Again, this is a point of, of discussion. Um, but that would be something to, to consider if we were to have just two programs versus all of the middle schools. You would see there that it would, the, um, staff required and then the associated cost. And it back to Audrey.
Could I ask a question?
Regarding, uh, the track staffing, would that then reduce that one-point-eight social worker as well? So the track students would no longer have that? And they would then come under the social worker assigned to the site?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll bring it back to you.
Correct.
Well, I also have a question. Um, on the wheel, you said that prop twenty-eight fund sixty percent?
Correct.
Is that just for elementary?
Yes, where the wheel is in elementary school, yes.
So do we have the wheel in middle school?
No.
Okay. So do we currently have it in middle school? We don't? Okay. And also I, one more thing is in respects to the coaches, where the plan is to reduce the coaches, how do we determine where the coaches go? How is that going to happen?
For the, uh, four remaining coaches?
The ones that have been that will no longer, because we're going from nineteen to four.
Uh huh.
So those fourteen or fifteen
Oh.
coaches, how are we going to determine where they go?
Yes, I think that's an HR process that maybe.
Could you, just, just so that obviously there, I'm sure there's some concern.
That's true.
It's because we're going from nineteen to four. So if there are some coaches that are currently listening, they would like to know the process in which that movement will occur. If we can just, and it doesn't have to get too deep, just something that will relieve you maybe some stress that they live in.
We are going to be, we are currently in the process of creating staffing for each school and we will have openings at different locations. And, and that's, we'll let them select where they live.
They'll, they'll look back.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, you know, based, as we talked about all these proposed changes, please know that we have definitely not forgotten the people impact on our organization. Currently, we have eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-six employees across our whole organization. Um, we are proposing, uh, staffing of seventeen-hundred-and-one, which is a total reduction of a hundred-and-ninety-five employees, dedicated EUSD employees.
Next, I wanted to talk about, uh, our site budgets. Uh, the monies that are distributed to the different schools from a variety of different, uh, resources. And so currently, uh, we distribute funds from our, our supplemental and concentration dollars. We have discretionary money that comes out of our base. Uh, we have something we call SIP. Uh, and that's just a stand-in title we use, uh, for funds to schools that are not, um, qualifying for title, uh, programs. We have distribution of funds for Avid, uh, to our middle schools. And then of course Title One to the schools that qualify for that. Uh, as you can see the current, uh, and then next year's, uh, proposed distribution to the schools.
So actually before we go into the activity and I want to give board members a chance to op- uh, ask questions, we believe we have the audio corrected. So if, but we're, we're going to need to test it and kind of do some things if, if we can take a short break.
Absolutely. Let's take a five-minute break. We'll see if we can get the audio back up.
And then.
And then we'll come back with questions.
Okay.
So we're adjourned for five minutes.
Five minutes?
It'll make it easier.
Okay. All right, we're live again. Okay. My apologies to the folks at home watching, I need to keep it out of presentation mode now for the next part of this activity. But set the stage for that activity. As we showed, we had $3.9 million remaining unplanned in our supplemental concentration funding. And so tonight, we wanted to work with the board to explore items from the list of cost centers that are not included in base plus. And plan how to budget the remaining $3.9 million. Also, beyond that, we'd like to also plan items to bring back if the budget situation improves over the next few months. And so instead of stopping just the 3.9, I also want to hear, we need to hear maybe the top two things beyond that.
Want to make sure you all have clarity that you, you heard that we don't have, like, what's included in the base plus? So you have the option also to go back, get clarification on what's there, what's not. Because if you want something to be, that way you, you know exactly what you can bring back as well.
Okay, so just to refresh what we've seen before, again, to set the stage for this activity. There you have the base plus, the 3.9 million to be planned. If we remain within that 3.9, that would keep us at the $5.8 million or less deficit for next year and maintain fiscal solvency as you see here in this slide. And the reminder, these are the things that are in base plus that are already included. In that, before you, right now, you have the board, we have, I've given you a handout that has the items that are base plus. And then also there's section of the handout, it's like this. There's a section of orange that corresponds to what's on this slide. So these are the items that are currently in the district that are not included in base plus. We need to work together to build up to $3.9 million. Okay, how this slide works here, this is the live activity that we'll be doing. Building up to $3.9 million. The deficit that we're targeting is the 5.8, and for this mathematically to work out here, for this mathematically to work, we would, the deficit there, the third cell over, would need to go up to 5.8. Currently without that 3.9, the deficit is at 1.9 million. Once we get to 5.8, that would be, that would mean that we have planned out 3.9. If we go over that deficit on, goes over the 5.8, that will turn red, that just alerts us that we'll have to go back and make further adjustments. So now, I wanted to open it up to our board. If you could refer to the handout, you can do, you can tell, discuss this in one of two ways. The orange items are those that referred, they're on that previous slide. Remind everybody there. You could either say the name of the item, or the number that's on the far left column there. And then our Director of Fiscal Services and our Director of Ed Services Kathleen Sorenson are going to work together to update this in order to update that slide so that we can all keep up with where we are as we build up to that $3.9 million. But who would like to begin?
So can I just clarify?
Please.
Are able to ask questions about the base plus that is in white and to work with the base plus that is in orange in order and really debate plus.
And orange is realistically what we are looking to allocate to build up to the 3.9 million.
Right, that's what's not included currently in the budget for next year.
And much of this is contractually bound, for example, item number 68, degree stipends, those are contractually bound. There is no option there whatsoever.
Correct, that's stuff that we would have to negotiate, we, we couldn't just make a decision now without negotiating that. So that's included in base plus already.
So, Mr. President, Superintendent, do you want to have one person go at a time and talk about top priorities? Or how would we like to do this?
Well, I think first we need to just kind of give each board member an opportunity to kind of look over it. And then from there, we can come back in a minute or so to kind of get some interpretation and or input.
They are, they're turned on. Just a reminder for members, just speak loudly, we have microphones turned on on each of these laptops. Just so the audience, I'm going to get here, you better.
Yeah, there was other things in the orange that were not mentioned as, that you could clearly see that, like gate. We didn't mention that because it's self-explanatory, but also not included in, in base plus.
It's not currently included in the base.
Correct, it would need to be pulled, it would need to be a priority. So anything in orange is not there, but the board can bring it up as a priority into the budget.
But you, but for instance, gate, you simply have a reduction. That's not eliminating the entire amount proposed. Is that so?
So what you see on the orange section?
Yeah.
Can I put that slide, we can go back to the slide on the, I had to go, I had to do it here. On this slide here that's on the screen now, the, the gate item at the top there is inclusive of the reduction you see on that.
Right.
But that, the gifted and talented enrichment is not currently included in base plus. That's something that's up for consideration to be included in the 3.9.
Okay. Well, I think that's really important. It took us a long time when we eliminated gate the last time. It took us a long time to get it back and we're just starting to see some movement and, and it actually helping our, our more talented kid or more able kids. And I hate to see that because we have to think about the future.
So plus, kind of, we haven't really discussed necessarily ground rules. I can add that to the list now, we can see that as part of that package of 3.9. Or it does, do I want to get consensus for that?
Maybe, maybe we need to work, get everybody's initial opinions and then work for consensus.
Perfect, okay.
Good idea, but I, I'd like to make this mention because when I saw that and I was thinking about it and I thought, I think the most important part is identifying and clustering. We've done a lot of training with our teachers, we have a lot of talented teachers who are conversant in, in teaching and, and dealing with gay children. So I, I don't think we need to spend a lot of extra money. I mean, we had a speaker today who came from Washington State and he's coming back again and I don't think he came cheap. So things like that, maybe we'd have to reduce, but I think there should be some allowance, at least for the testing and identifying.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
I'm ready to go as soon as.
Mark, how are you?
Mr. Paulson can start, I'm still getting my head around things.
Okay, so is this microphone on?
That's your microphone.
Okay. Um, all right, so what I see of the base plus in orange that is currently not allocated for is I just have the feeling that a lot of this can be moved into after-school programs funded through the ELOP program. And much of the gains and the efforts that we've already made could be continued in an after-school setting. And I think the gifted and talented program is one of those where our teachers are really, have gotten a lot of education in providing additional instructional opportunities for our gifted students. So for example, we could do a lot of that enrichment in the after-school program through ELOP. Say, I have the feeling that we could do the same sort of thing with our elementary music program. I, I, like Ms. Gardner, this district is known for its elementary music. Through all of the funding cuts of the past decades, of the past many decades, we have held on to our elementary music program. We don't want to see that go. But we have a lot of funding in our ELOP program after school. And I, I just wonder, could that be continued in a very robust way in the after-school setting? Same with visual and performing arts, item number 83. I'm just musing, could that be continued through our ELOP program? I would like to say that two of the things for safety re, or for number, item number 79, I would promote that, the pupil re-engagement team as really necessary. The way for us to improve our financial situation and the education of all students in our, in our city who are not necessarily in our schools at the moment because they're not attending is through the very intensive work of the school re-engagement team. I, I think if any of these is an automatic, it's number 79, that re-engagement team. Because I have the feeling they recuperate for the district far more in ADA than they cost. I, I, I don't have any statistics to back that up, but my, my impression would be if they get, well, if they get 20 students attending for the year, then we're making a profit off them. So I would push for number 79. Number 81, I also agree, the trek program as an alternative to expulsion, an area with intense assistance to students having the most trouble. I think maintaining a trek program, yes, is important. They're probably going to have to be bigger and they're probably going to have to be regionalized so that we can reduce the number of those programs. But at the same time, the difference in distance for a middle school student between Mission Middle School and Rincon, it's a couple miles. And I think that's a very doable, a very doable program as well. And one that if we're going to really help to turn students, the trek teachers have done a very good job of making extremely good connections with, with their students. I wish it could, obviously, we all wish it could continue at every school. But that not being possible, we have to maintain it to some degree. A question on item number 80, 8-0, the alternative learning centers. Is this proposal to maintain the current situation of an alternative learning center staff full-time at each site?
Yeah, that, that dollar amount there corresponds to how it is today.
Okay.
And the regional trek program cost is, is that what we saw on the slide before the Dr. Philly showed of the regionalized only.
Right, okay, so I'm promoting the regionalized only for track, the alternative learning center at each middle school. I, I'm wondering if we have a cost, I believe there was another idea where we might go to the model that was previously used in the district where different teachers were sharing the period, the different periods during the day. So I guess that's actually a question.
Yeah, no, that's actually something that we could work with the, the site administrators to identify any, any free periods that teachers might have and work with the teachers and teachers that you would spread out for ELC only if they would be willing to take it during that open period. That's definitely something, the, the other option would be the sites can determine and have somebody using their site funds paid for, buy someone prep that and kind of have some six month contract to be able to take care of those needs. Because right now, this includes, remember, there's one teacher and one para assigned to that classroom.
Right. And you know, the things that, the item number 86, just a question there. Safety is paramount to all of us. The question is, can we afford it? Is the SRO that we're discussing here, is it an additional SRO?
It's the, one of the three that we currently have in this city. I believe one is a grant-funded, one is city-funded, and then this is one that we all share the cost with all of the other educational agencies, the private schools, the charter schools, the high school district. Based on enrollment, we do pay more than the others because we have more enrollment than either school in town. And then we split the cost of that SRO.
And it's still 130,000.
Well, and this also, yeah.
That includes also the juvenile diversion part of that. Breakdown of what one is versus the other.
No.
Nonetheless, that item there would be inclusive of the SRO contribution that we make.
And I, I, I'm not sure of that formula of by student population because clearly most calls for service for the SROs.
Secondary, yeah.
Are, are at.
It's the mid, the R's.
Oh, middle school population. Okay, that, that makes sense because our TK population probably is not using the services of the SRO frequently. Okay. All right, so those are, those are my thoughts. And so could I just ask the question? And this may need to go to somebody else or for further research. Are my ideas of moving 82 elementary teachers, 83 BAPA, and 75 gay to ELOP, are those, is that even possible or is that just a, a wacky idea?
I think it, it could be possible. Again, we would need to kind of redesign and, and really take a look at what that offering would look like. I know other districts have the, and kind of those offerings after school. So it certainly would be an option for us to look at that as far as the music goes. In regards to BAPA, again, we would, we offer a lot of art classes and those theater classes. A lot of those things do come through our ELOP program after school. So those opportunities are there for that.
We could probably look up the cost of the, if we can find the cost of the, the test and for gate, for gate.
For the screener.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I would ask because you have it listed here as gifted and talented enrichment. But on the sheets that we were given, it just said, oh, well, it does say enrichment as well.
Because we could provide the extra curriculars.
The extracurriculars, the field trips, all of that through ELOP. And still do the screener, the screener, I think is just a couple dollars per student, right?
It shouldn't be very expensive now. Yeah, so we would have to get the cost, but again, I don't see that as being a high cost. We could try to look up and see.
Well, you need a proctor for each class.
Yes, well, but we train our, our teachers to, for the second graders to do the screening, so.
And the cost of the test.
Right.
The licensing.
Really not.
No, I wouldn't think that's the major cost and that's why I'm saying that's the important thing we don't want to lose because that's hard to get back, find a test, everything else.
We have some specific camps like C camp that's specific for gates. We have some summer.
But that could, that could be done through.
That's all, exactly, and that was all.
It would just be opened, right, to not just gate students, but it could be dive, yes.
And it, it might reduce the cost of like the speaker we have today, but in these times, that may be.
Yeah, we would reduce. That's what I said, those things are superfluous as far as I'm concerned.
Important thing would be just the testing.
And the basic recognition, yeah.
The screening, the recognition, we, we, we maintain that in case we get funding back. But we move the activities to, to an after-school and a non-regular day venue, which.
And that would be fine.
Which might be more appetizing to the students anyway because they might want to be with their classes for the other stuff.
And I, I did just hear that the, for the COGAT test and that screener, it's about 30,000.
Total.
Total.
So, so can, can we get consensus to just add the screener only? The COGAT screener only, that's the test, that's the task. Um, at 30, at, in that $30,000 range. And, and I think that might be a compromise, would that be satisfactory?
Yes, as long as we recognize the after-school part of it as well.
We have consensus to add that to the list right now? Okay, so this will be our first item, so bear with us as now we're going to show back to this slide. Would you like to update that? $30,000? And you can also update the, the language of it if you want to put that on as well, let me know when you're ready. We'll get that going, when you guys want to discuss further, I'll have that, it'll show up on the screen here in a, in a moment. But you can continue the discussion on any other items at this point as well.
Um, could I ask for consensus to add in number 79 to district pupil re-engagement teams, that's at a cost of 161, 691. And again, I, I, I would just like to promote that as a way to improve to recognize that we've already improved our attendance rates up to 94%, which I know that's not great, but it's a lot better than most school districts right now, a lot better, like 3% better.
And I would agree with that.
Yes.
And so we're talking about the pupil re-engagement at the cost that's in there right now?
Yes.
161.
Okay, so the pupil re-engagement team. Item.
79.
79. So you can see now on the screen there, the gifted and talented enrichment program that we just discussed at 30,000 is now included. That deficit number has changed, so now we've, we've gone $30,000 into our 3.9. And then down there in orange, you can see that item there, so now we can kind of keep track of what's already in there. We're good?
And then, just before I finish, could I please just ask for other thoughts on item number 81, moving to a regional trek program at a cost of 362,000 as opposed to the, I believe it's over a million dollars.
It was close to.
960, thank you. Could we just discuss or, or ask for consensus on that?
Is there, is, because currently we're, our trek programs are running around five or six students per trek program. So when we, when we combine that, is that going to then?
15.
Move without the two locations, so you're going to, you're obviously going to increase in your, your class size. Is that going to be a, a burden on the trek teacher and the para that's going to be in there? How are we, how are we going to mitigate that concern of going from five to 15? Is, I mean.
Yeah, the, the program actually was designed to serve about 15 as a target number for trek. So we would still.
So we've been way below it, which is then, okay.
Correct.
That was my only concern.
Well, and I, I think that number of 15, that might be, that's a lot.
Yeah.
That's a lot with, with the wonderful students in track and the fact that they have not reached their behavioral or personal best. That's going to be a challenge.
Yes.
You know, and some of the students may, may make the choice to go to a different educational setting as a result, but.
But is there any concerns or do we have a consensus reference that?
I, I agree with.
Yeah, I agree, I guess my one question, which may be, you know, pointless at this time. If they were designed to function at 15 and we're historically at five and six, is it just, you know, why has that gap gone off? Maybe, and it may not be relevant to the conversation now, but just as we go forward, I think those are the things we need to identify our metrics, not lying at what, what the stated objectives. So that we don't get into this situation here of like, okay, let's right-size it before we get into these difficult situations. Just, that's my only thought on that. And maybe, maybe it was determined in the process of like, 15, maybe that's not the right number. We should adjust our metrics based upon what's going on. That's my only thought on that, but I'm, I'm okay with the stated objective.
I think actually, they may have served their purpose to a degree in that we haven't ever gotten up to that number of, I think 12 to 15 was the original number we were considering because kids are like, ooh, maybe we don't want to be in there, so maybe some kids are making a better choice. You know? But yeah, I agree, we, we should do a better job of monitoring and making sure and not waiting for a financial crisis like we're in now to do our own.
Do we have consensus on the regional?
I believe we do.
Yes, we do, so.
Okay. The regional trap.
Could I ask just a clarifying question on item 88, SIP site allocations? You may have gone over that and I missed it.
We did.
You did, okay, so I'm going to apologize and ask for you to go over it again. That was embarrassing.
So these are all of, this is right here on the screen for you to see. Let me get that on the screen for those at home. Are all of the different funds that were distributed to schools current year and then for the next year proposed. So what's in the next year proposal is included in base plus. Those items with zero right now are not included in base plus. And so at this point, what was your question about the SIP specifically?
The item 88 SIP site allocation, so are we saying we're going to split up $295,000 between 23 schools?
No, just those are, there's the schools that don't qualify for title fund.
How many schools is that?
Four of those. There's four schools that don't get title fund, correct?
Four.
Five schools.
Five.
Five schools that don't get that, so the five schools split that up.
Okay, five schools, so.
It's the equivalent, when we gave, when we made a decision to give the sites their supplemental concentration allocation, this provided a little something for those non.
There's seven schools that receive the SIP funds. Seven schools receive the SIP funds. Seven, seven, seven schools receive SIP funds. The remainder receive the Title I funds.
So about 40, $45,000 per school, okay. And for equity reasons, are we interested in, in putting that in?
It was, it was to provide, it was supposed to be the equivalent of, the others got supplemental concentration.
I'm just saying that this seems like a fairly small amount and what I think we know is that those funds that are just allocated directly to the site as discretionary funds tend to be very valuable and very careful, used very cautiously. And so this is. Yes. Yes.
Is, is that something that we have consensus on or would like to discuss further?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
So there's a, a drop in Title I funding and I thought that was not, that comes from the, from the federal.
This year, we had carryover of 1.5 million and so for next year, we're not expecting that, one-time carryover.
This amount included the carryover.
Okay.
That's why it's different.
That's why it's different.
So are we?
There is no consensus on number eighty eight.
Okay, okay.
Is that supposed to be base plus, by the way, is there just a plus sign missing on this paper?
If you so, if if you bring it forward, it would become base plus. What's the worry, it's not.
Right, okay, I'm I'm just saying there's not a plus.
Oh.
On on this, it's just missing a plus.
It's missing. Some things are currently in the base, and some things are currently in supplemental concentration base, the ones the plus generally would mean it was in a supplemental concentration. Versus just our normal base funding.
So so this item crossing guards? Are we really talking about?
The crossing guards that work uh most of our schools to help children cross the street.
Yeah, I know.
Before and after. Yeah, remember it used to be a city funded?
Yes.
Activity and it.
And it was compact that.
Then the when they didn't provide it, we chose to contract out, we had con compacting it. And now we have a secure uh crossing guard company.
And they they have done an excellent job, I wanna say, I mean, they have got staffing out there, it's consistent staffing. They're very um, you know, I drive past FAR, it's been the same for individuals. This entire year, every day. The it it really, whatever this company is, I don't know where they're getting their employees, but they're very good.
So.
But.
But well, in these heavily uh traffic areas, I'm concerned.
Yes.
Really, I would be.
We do have some very.
Do we have these at every site?
No, no.
No.
I can get you a list of which schools are at and we determine which they go which school, and we actually have added schools over the last year.
Yeah.
Because of different traffic concerns around different schools.
Well, Bernardo still has one.
Yeah.
And.
And you Bernard does definitely have one.
I know, cause I drive that, yes, she's out there, yeah.
For example, FAR Elementary has one helping students and families crossing uh Lincoln Avenue. Which is the seventy eight.
Right.
And there's still people hitting fake street there at freeway speeds, because they haven't and same, oh same with Lincoln.
Right next to where the off ramp is there, yeah, that's.
You know, I mean, people are coming off the freeway, still going eighty miles an hour.
Yeah.
There are some places you can't, so we're maybe we should have to reevaluate where we're the most dangerous situations are.
And that's kind of what we've done into where we landed at where we're at with that right now.
So because you're not talking about eliminating all of them, even with this.
That's the entire contract for crossing guards.
Oh, it is the entire, so we have to add. So we'd have to add.
You'd have to add that in order to or or downsize at some degree, and we would have to prioritize. One corner over another perhaps.
Does that then? If we do prioritize and reduce it. Does that then bring liability to us, because if something happens? Would that then say, hey, before you did have it covered, now you don't? Would that then come back on us?
It's definitely a gray area in liability, given that, one, the safe routes to school, and you know, we're kind of responsible, as we know. In in different discussions with students, things that happen on the way home before they get home, or the way to school before they get to school, becomes under our purview. Uh but it's also a city street, and so it's not necessarily in our jurisdiction, so it's kind of that gray area, and I'm sure that someone could make a case in a court case, maybe. Anybody else, Mr. Olson, you had experience with this and.
No, I'm just, I I'm. Kind of along those those lines, where is that gray area, I mean, it still is a street, are we are we under an obligation at five o'clock in the evening? Because it's adjacent to a school to make sure somebody can safely cross the street, even if it's a student or not.
No, I I don't believe at that.
So, can can anybody bring a suit, obviously, you can, but you know, we don't have an obligation.
But does it open, my question is, is that if we reduce it.
You say, but you have them at one school.
Well, let's let's say you, let's say you had it at uh Rincon. And then you after looking at Rincon, you went, you know what, we're gonna pull that crossing garden. Because we don't have the funds to.
Right.
Put that person there, and then something happens there after that. Would would that open up that liability saying, hey? You had one there six months ago, now you don't, and now the student was injured because there wasn't one there. Would would that would that increase your liability?
It definitely would be added to the lawsuit.
I'm not a journey, but I don't think it would increase your liability from the sense that it is a public street, there are traffic calming and traffic controlling measures that are already in place. At that point, should something happen, let's say a a red light failed.
Right.
That is not the responsibility of the crossing guard or the school.
Right.
If there was a sequencing problem, so that that would go to the public entity which owns and maintains that, which is not the school district.
That we can't add signs? For helping with our traffic flows or parking or anything like that around our schools on the city streets, that's the the city does not allow us to do that. So that kind of goes towards the liability question of really the city owns the sidewalk and the streets and the crosswalks. We provide the service just as a means of of helping our students safely get across those streets to get to school. Like I said, someone might sue us for that, they can sue us uh for pretty much anything, it doesn't necessarily mean we're liable for. For any damages in that, but certainly what it's up for discussion is just should we consider crossing guards or not?
To all who are listening, this is a theoretical conversation, nobody's suggesting this, I think all I think, I would suggest that we just can again continually monitor. You know, we have limited resources, so we always have to continually monitor, are we applying them in the most judicious manner? Um, you know, Bear Valley Parkway is a very busy street, I've had kids go to school there for seventeen years. I've never gone through the intersection of Las Las Palmas and Bear Valley during school at more than three miles an hour.
Right, that's true.
Now, I'm just, that's not to say the crossing guard's not there, but I'm not going three miles an hour because the crossing guard's there, I'm going three miles an hour, cause four. Sections of intersection are coming together at one point, so at those times, it's not necessarily. Quite frankly, I would argue it's safer because of the influx of vehicles. At that time than it is at five or six o'clock in the evening, when it's in a flow that's fifty five mile fifty miles an hour.
We don't have a a crossing guard.
Again, not advocating for eliminating it at this time, I'm just, we need to take a look at this.
Yeah, yeah, there's. I don't think there.
And so I'm wondering if maybe one of the things we can do rather than cutting this out is if we continue with the contract, really evaluate.
Okay.
Where what are our highest priority areas and see if there's a portion of the contract that can be reduced.
Obviously, without having that evaluation, it's difficult to pin it to a number, but would you like to reduce the five hundred thousand to maybe three hundred thousand? And see what how much we can get done within that amount and work with our vendor to. And on ourselves and we and and our team, along with the city, actually, we work alongside them to determine some of the need here.
Because you know, and every, near every school, there are the signs, the city constructed signs that say school zones. Slow down when children are present to it, and the speed limit is like twenty five.
Yes.
So they bear a certain responsibility in.
Absolutely. The driver bears all of the responsibility.
So if there's a lawsuit, it wouldn't just, it wouldn't be because we don't have crossing guards.
Correct.
At the same time. We also have a responsibility just to the children, aside from any lawsuit, we wanna make sure that we're providing for safety.
Correct.
I think we all agree on that, so could we look at a possible reduction? But I do think there are some of these.
Yes.
Especially, I mean, the 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 one I drive past is FAR and Pioneer, and those speeds are high. And then when you mention Lincoln, I'm like, oh, yeah.
Those are main orders.
I don't, I don't, Lincoln, I don't have experience with in the morning, cause I I won't go anywhere near those traffic lights.
There is a lot of traffic and we do have crossing guards there.
No, no, I'm 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 saying, but especially crossing Lincoln there at Broadway. Oh, my goodness, I can't even, I don't even wanna think of what that looks like.
The other aspect of this to consider as well when it comes to the crossing, they actually just manage, they push the button. Like anybody that would walk across the street, and they walk out into the street and they crosswalk with people, but they aren't uh uh supposed to actually stop traffic. Without there being a stop sign or a or a or a stop light. They go out and actually stop.
No, but they sure make up their presence.
But they but they they double the impact of stop signs on the side of the road.
Correct, it's it's a visual that allows the the drivers to say, hey, I need to.
Right.
Be prudent in my driving.
When the two guys at at FAR Elementary, and I'm sorry to go on about this. They're out in the middle of the street before they wave to the kids to cross.
Yeah.
You know, and so it's like if someone's gonna get hit. As we know.
As if.
As we know.
Yeah.
At Del Dios, uh it's gonna be the crossing guard.
So are we in consensus to reduce it to three hundred reference evaluation?
Well, pending pending evaluation, right, I mean, let's try to reduce it.
Sure, that's for the purpose of this activity, we can go with the three hundred thousand.
Right, and if it doesn't work, because it's the safety liability, then come back to us.
And and again, tonight's this activity, looking for direction, but we're not taking a vote. We actually don't adopt our budget until June, we'll be discussing it at board meetings throughout the rest of the year, and so we can come back. With some insight on that, probably even before we get to the adoption of the budget, so can we put it in at three hundred thousand, does that work? For this activity, okay, crossing guard, it's ready to go.
Can also get some input from the company that we're using.
What was that?
We could ask the company that we're using for crossing guards, help us to help us evaluate.
Yeah.
And give us some information.
They're neck deep in that traffic and where they're at, and some of them would know if there's a need, you know, they're there and they're not doing much, or ones that are definitely.
They're they're the ones to know.
Sure.
Unless we go out and physically evaluate each one.
Our facilities director and our purchasing director work with the city on the. Traffic flows and crossing guard issues and all of that, and so um we'll work with all of the folks involved, including the city and the company to.
And under normal circumstances, I'd suggest we go back to the city and say, hey, you need to step up and take part of the responsibility that's. On you as well, but.
Traffic enforcement definitely.
But it's a bad all over.
For sure. Okay, so the activity on the street now has updated with crossing guards at the three hundred thousand, you can see just. We're about three million dollars away from.
We're what?
About three million dollars away.
Yeah, we've got all this.
Target of three point nine million.
You've done all the small stuff.
And and the, if we don't necessar, we don't necessarily have to hit it, because.
You're right.
That would, every every dollar you save in this year is.
Yeah.
Two and three ongoing. And um, I mean, we're still looking at a targeted deficit.
Correct, correct, every dollar we're talking about now is inside of the deficit.
Yeah, a structural deficit, that's ongoing.
Yes.
Thrill share.
Yeah, and just we are, we are. Not considering the music teachers and the VAC, at this point, we're looking at moving those into ELOP.
Right.
So we can cross those all.
Okay.
Is that, is that?
That's what I was hoping we could look at, and you would come back and and let us know if that's possible.
Yeah, and I think we could come back with other information later and even reprioritize this list if that becomes uh necessary with that new information, for sure.
But I've just got. Um, first of all, can we please, and I appreciate um. Can we just go over the thrill share cost, that is item number sixty seven?
Yes. What is your question about that?
Just can you remind us of exactly what thrill share is and how.
That's our website and our communication platform between our staff and our parents. In employee. Oh, and there's also an employee that our webmaster, that manages our website. So the webmaster.
Okay.
The website, it programmed itself, that we have, and that also provides the ADA, the American Disability Act. Uh but we have to have built into our website, so it's compliant. Uh and then it's the communication platform as well, and it's something that's also ever growing to know that company, it continues to add more functionality. At our request, uh to bring more about, so that we can have one system uh for all of our needs uh at some point in the future with this system.
Okay, so it's our website vendor.
Our website.
Website rooms are our classroom communication tool, our live feed and news. Uh, but once, for all schools.
It, may I ask a question on item number forty eight under base, which is the SERP? It it just, can you remind us, is that the cost of the last SERP we did in twenty twenty? Of the last early retirement um?
Yes, we're still paying on that SERP at that amount.
Okay. This is the last.
The coming year, that this is for.
Okay, next year is the last.
Twenty four, twenty five year is the last year, that payment would be the last payment towards.
Okay, and that SERP we did was in school year nineteen twenty, is that correct? Okay, so about five years to pay that off, okay, thank you. Nineteen twenty, right as we went into COVID. Uh I I'm sorry, school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, yeah.
Took a lot of years.
That's a lot of years.
It's almost like Rincon. You know, you weren't even here, ninety eight, the ninety eight Rincon cops.
Okay, so if we wanna look at maybe S R O program, do you have the version? I'll leave in consensus that we should.
Not necessarily.
That is a tough one.
If we don't uh make our contribution, we pull out of that, then the rest of the city will take up the cost of that. But then we necessarily would have access to the third S R O, I don't know how the.
That's gonna work.
Police department would manage, that we're not paying our part of that third S R O, certainly may have access to two of them. That are provided without this cost, I don't know what the logistics would be for how to manage that.
It would probably be they would assign those two to certain areas. And then those two officers would then be taken on those areas, so you'd have like an east row, west S R O. And they would be responsible for all of those, and then the third one would be responsible for everything outside of.
Our schools.
Our schools.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. So it's sounding that would be a reduction in access.
Exactly.
And service from.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we do see all three of them in different places throughout the time, so you're you're being serviced by all three different.
The the way it works is they, they usually have an area of assignment. And but if one of the SROs is busy and something comes up in their school, then one of the other SROs would then pick up that assignment. So, to reduce that one by one. Could either reduce the response in respects to whatever assignment that is being handed.
And and I don't wanna be, I'm not trying to do a commercial, but just being involved with them myself a lot. Um, they also, if a non S R O police officer responds to a call in a school. Uh generally speaking, they would call one of the SROs, and they're and they've become, really, they can translate. Kind of what we do at a school and how a school is, and I know I've had a lot of conversations with their SROs, that you know, one of the. A regular police officer shows up and has a different idea of how to approach a school or a student. And the S R O informs them or talks them through the better way uh of dealing with our students, and remember, we just had Officer Reber retired.
Yes.
I mean, the relationships he was able to build with our students uh in this city was, I mean, I saw him at at missions, eighth grade promotion. And it it all of the students coming up to him and really set the stage, our our S R O team really. Uh makes people feel very comfortable with the police department here in town, uh that's all I would have to say about SROs.
So so you're basically, um.
I'm not doing it.
You're not doing the commercial, but you're, no, you're giving your perspective, which is good, because we're not um as involved.
And I can say, and I can say from my years working with the SROs closely. Um, it it is a function, you know, need to have them there.
So here we have two two pros, and I who I who I respect both the those opinions, so.
And I I I I think that because we've put such an emphasis on student safety, I I think that it would be a. I mean, the 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 price tag is is large, but I think that that we do need to be. You know, a part of the school community support for the police department as they support us, so.
It's also, it's also a way for PD to. To have that community engagement and bridge those gaps, especially in some of the neighborhoods and communities that might be resistant. Right. To forge those relationships, as Mr. Houston had said, so. We've, yes, it's. A decent sum, but.
We were looking at the cost of the diversion versus the S R O, and. Just, we can't find the the exact breakdown at the moment, but I believe it's about a hundred thousand, actually, just for the S R O. Believe it's about a hundred thousand, actually just for the SRO.
I think the diversion.
There you go, diversion's thirty.
Yeah.
I think the diversion will be a small percentage, but that's a valuable program.
Especially the diversion, normally, the first step.
Yeah.
After something occurs with a student. Juvenile hall and everything else, so to step away from that diversion program, I think would be a mistake. Because that's something that allows them to, the student that is, has made poor choices to kind of get an idea of. What further bad choices could get them through, so I think it's important that we kind of continue down that road to allow the diversion there.
Used to have visitation.
Yes. Just a jail.
They do not do.
Yes, we do.
I think we have a consensus reference that.
So that whole line item.
Number eighty six.
Okay, she's adding it now, so I'll add it now to show up on the screen momentarily.
Uh, while we're on this same topic, can we look at item number eighty, can uh. Eight, eight, zero, alternative warning center at each middle school. Did we wind up making a decision about that?
We did not, no.
Okay.
We looked at, we talked about, we'll put this site to do, do this, uh, how would they handle this? One idea is that we could work with them to identify different places within their master schedule, you wouldn't have. You would still get the same outcome, but not a dedicated, because right now it's an elective.
Right.
And there's, and there's a different way we could do that with, within their allocation of what they get. Because right now it's, you get your staffing allocation and you get the segmentation.
You can go back later and kind of, those. That, that's a possibility, or.
No, I meant, you've been working with people on master schedules.
Yes, and some, some principals have little spots in.
Very confident that it could happen within the master schedule.
Essentially, you said that one of the options is that we could leave it to the sites to come up with their own. Strategy within their site budget, to basically pay for prep for individual seats and is.
Being fitted within if someone's already non-prep period time too, if there's an open period for some of.
Correct.
So combination of those two things.
It just seems like there's a, there's an avenue to get here that.
Yes.
Already has cost savings built into it, and we should be at least exploring.
What would that cost savings be approximately, if we, if we could get it? People taking it during their prep or during an open period that they don't have, that they have unassigned.
If it's all open periods, there would be no cost additional to that, because it would be built in already to the staffing that we already would have allocated to the schools within our base staffing. We'd have to go back and, and look at how much would be required to work into the prep period and six fifth thing to know what that cost would be. Twenty percent. I don't know if.
It would be about twenty percent of a salary.
Would that be paid at the extra hourly rate, or would that be paid at the per diem rate?
It's, it's the, it basically ends up a six fifth, and I think.
You would have twenty percent more.
Of their, of their salary.
Would you be looking at a reduction of at least half that number, or not more?
It would be vastly more than half that number reduction, because at this point, that dollar amount reflects a full FTE in every school, plus the. Plus the paraeducators, so we're talking about two people.
And with those paraeducators, the paraeducators would continue in whatever classroom it was, is that correct?
I, I think that the program from what we're talking about, if you were to keep it, because right now, they have the paraeducator because of the. Academy portion, so there's the academy elective, and then there's the ALC portion for. Like if a student has a suspension for a period, so that's why there was the para and the teacher. So the other option would be no para at all, and now you just have one FTE, one teacher. To help assist with those situations for ALC.
ALC only and the academy would go away.
Correct.
Okay, um, and the, I, I am just concerned about cutting positions. I, that's a huge concern, because we're talking individuals here who. And so in this paradigm, the, the paraeducators would just be. Uh, brought into another position.
We have contracted parents right now around our district, they would take places of those, I would think first and foremost, and we have.
We've also got just open positions.
I was gonna say, I think vacancies after that as well.
Okay, so um, would it be reasonable for us to say that if we were to go to that model? Our actual cost would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars.
To do those prep periods, you mean?
Yes, to do, to do it through prep period, open periods and prep periods, would that be a fair statement? Or would that be too little?
We could start there, but I think some of it will be taken up by open periods too.
I think most of it will be taken up by open periods, that would help us continue employment, six fifths, I, I. Although I have been the recipient of six fifths, when we're talking about laying people off, some of our best teachers. Because of a budget crisis, you know, it, it, the preferable thing for me would be for it to be open periods.
And that's, that would be our preference as well.
And so that, so that we wind up employing more people. Without giving people six fifths and.
And we can't count on six fifths either.
That's right.
Because they have to agree, and not everybody wants to give up their prep, so maybe not even be an opportunity for that at a school, whereas an open period is really either the master scheduling.
Okay, so I, I mean, I'm just throwing that number two hundred thousand dollars out, if anybody else has a better idea.
It's hard to estimate, given that we wouldn't know.
Can we allot two hundred and fifty thousand and you come back?
Two thirds off and go from there, which is probably would be three hundred thousand, three hundred.
Three hundred thousand, census at three hundred, Miss Carter?
Yeah, that's.
Do I hear three hundred?
You're not an auctioneer. So we're continuing ALC just in a slightly different form.
Yes.
And that, that's an important thing to middle schools, right, having somewhere to put students.
Yes.
During an investigation, we, we've got to continue that.
Okay, that's been added at the three hundred thousand dollar level. That's fine, just making sure, okay. Okay. Any other items?
Well, I'll do it, go. Item eighty four. You know, we've had conversations about this in the past about. Is there a different way to, you know, the, the cross the board minimize or eliminate the convo class, it's not, you know. It's some, in my opinion, somewhat of a semantics thing, but I think it also can be looked at as a way. If we, the most important thing is kids that are performing at the same level, learning at the same level, at the same rate. So now I know that's an identification challenge, or Dr. Philly looks at me like I'm just crazy. I understand that, but it is a big number. Um, so I just wanted to at least toss that out for a conversation, because that's a big number there, and if there's ways to. To serve the students in a similar fashion as we've been talking about with other items. That would allow us to continue other things unabated, so.
So this is based on, this would minimize it, not eliminate it, so we're looking at, right now this is twenty, the board can actually determine, look. What if you did uh. Like K one, you could focus it on early. This is kind of what, K one?
K one is the worst combo.
That twenty teachers, that's the number of combos that we project we would have uh, in our new staffing model, at the K one level. And I think second reading, we can do that as well.
And that's three, three million, three hundred thousand, just for the K one level, basically.
Any combos that might happen in the K one two level, when we looked at our staffing grades for elementary schools, there was about twenty. That would have happened in the K one or two, it could be a K one, it could be a one two.
Yeah, that, that makes me feel a little, little bit better, because when I think about combo classes, I, I think about classes like three, four, four, five. And I think, not, it's not only, not good for the, for the learning process for the children, but for the teacher. Who has to have, basically cover two grade levels, if, if they're doing a job, and um. All of the curriculum that's required, all of, it just makes no sense to me. To, to do that, to have more combination classes than.
My only thought was, we have students that learn at a greater rate, and we, I mean, so either way, it's not, it's no perfect science. I'm not saying that, but if someone's at the high end of the learning criteria and the others are struggling. Neither is benefiting from that scenario.
You're right, but then that should occur in one grade level, because um. There are still, there, there are the requirements, the standards for each grade level, and again, that, that falls on the teacher. To, to cover those standards, and either in a. That's why it's better to, to do that in one classroom, to have the kids at, at basically. Pretty much the same level or near the same level, instead of running the gamut, that's another thing that's always bothered me, you have. You, you always teach to the, you have to teach the middle, and there are some kids that always get lost, and there's, there are the kids that. Are bored to tears because they've mastered the standards already and ready to move on.
I guess that, that proves my point, is that if we can. Let's say third, fourth, right, math's a difficult one, right, let's just use math, if you find third graders that are at the high end, and fourth graders at the low end, they're now learning the same stuff. And so the teacher can teach really one thing, yeah, they may learn at different rates, but at least it's one kind of criteria, again, we have to identify. Who are the, the ones that need more help on one grade, and who are the ones that are beyond the, the middle?
Who's ones who are below grade level?
Well, or just beyond, just beyond what that you, you, you don't want to teach the middle, because half the class has already passed that, they're getting bored. So, I don't know, just, it's, it's not a perfect science, it's, there's no silver bullet, I get it, but.
And within any classroom, you're going to have students with different needs. Students that are working at a higher grade level, students that are working at a lower grade level. And oftentimes in different subjects, they're working at different grade levels, so there's always gonna be that. You, in order to teach any class, you're going to have to have differentiated instruction. You're gonna have to have your groups working to the higher level, at the lower level, and yeah, any fourth grade teacher. They are teaching the fourth grade standards, they're also having to go back and teach the third grade standards if the student hasn't mastered them. That's just the reality of the classroom, and also, if you've got a student who's advanced, they've gotta be. Teaching the fifth grade standards, you know, we've gotta do that, and our teachers are. Our district benefits from excellent teachers who are able to do, who have not only mastered the word differentiation. But they've mastered the skill of differentiation, and you just see this in one classroom after another, after another, um. I, I think what we need to do is, I think we do need to. Minimize the number of combination classrooms, we can't. We have put a lot of emphasis for many years on having, on mitigating combo classes. And. Which has been fine during boom times, but if we're going to have combination classes. And we probably are gonna need some more, I don't know about twenty, that's scary. Uh, that's a lot, but there, I mean, and I know our principals know this, I know all our cabinet knows this. But we've got to make sure that there is a real. Effective deliberate placement and. Uh, construction of those classes that involves, help me if I'm getting this wrong, Ms. Frank. That involves the principal, that involves the lead teachers, the teacher from the previous grade level. And the accepting teacher, so that they really understand, and we make sure to get that mixed, so that we get. The high, lower grade students mixed with the. Uh, the upper grade student that needs a little bit more help. And that, that we, we look at the subjects they need help in also, so that's gotta be deliberate. Three point three million dollars, can, can you clarify? Because I'm not sure that I understood, that was only. To mitigate for K one?
K one two, and then, as we've been working with our elementary principals, especially we believe now that the combos. That may happen without mitigation would be thirteen at the K two, anything related to anybody in kindergarten through second grade. Not a kind, not a kinder to secondary combo, but maybe raise one, two, a K one, that would happen, that would be about thirteen. And that would be about one point nine million to mitigate the thirteen combos that we think would occur in the K one and two range.
Okay, so those would be either K one combos or one, two combos.
Yes.
Okay, so let's just make sure anybody listening understands, we are not talking about three grade combos.
Not at all.
No, we are not discussing that, okay.
Because the four, five combo is generally, as a former four or five computer, probably the easiest, and the previous year's teachers, they build the combo knowing. That it's a combo, and then, you know, you have uh, other, the teachers working with other grade levels. I, I need to do math, so I'm, I have ten math fourth graders, you're gonna absorb my fourth, you know what I mean, they're, everyone's working together as a collaborative team. So, four or five is probably the sweetest spot, but K one and two is.
Is.
Harder.
Harder.
Because, you know, you have various levels of students.
So. And I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not fully understanding, so I just need you to tell us. Are you saying that if we did the one point nine million, that would pretty well mitigate the number of K one? One, two combos?
Yes.
So that's an option, is that we could say we're gonna allot one point nine million for to mitigate those, you know. And then maybe other monies as they become available, if things get better. If some of our other calculations say that we can.
Yeah, yeah, so that could be one of those items beyond the three point nine, half of it happened like that.
And that's what we used to, this has evolved from, we used to allocate when we were due budget, X amount of FTEs for any surprises that came about. You leave in the summer and you have your glasses all set, and guess what, surprise, surprise, they never come in nice packages to actually respond to those. So it would be, you know, right now, we, we have a target, it's set, set, a set amount of FTEs. That we can help mitigate, and whatever surprises, that would be a good start.
And, and you're saying, Ms. Frank, you're saying, and Dr. Philly, you're saying that, that K one, one, two. That is the, the most crucial spot.
Yes, it's typically the most challenging, and also it speaks to kind of a focus on early intervention, right? We had talked about um, being able to best support at the early eight grades, so that that gap doesn't grow. So you'd be allocating resources towards targeting the, those groups.
I feel like we should spend as much money as possible as a secondary goal, but we've got more things that we need to do. That we need to go through, so I would just propose that we at, as a starting point, put in at least one point nine million dollars. To do those lower combo, combo mitigations.
Right, and that would be about thirteen uh, FTEs that that would, a lot. Is there a consensus to add that?
I will defer.
Wha- wha- what would your preference be?
I, I just don't like combos, I think they're.
So you're saying.
No, I'm not saying put the whole thing in, because I know we can't do it, I know what we're facing.
We're, we actually, we're close right now, we actually could, I mean, we could put in two point five million.
And again, I'm saying, just because you, you have a targeted deficit, doesn't mean you have to spend every nickel of that targeted deficit.
True.
The the more you can, I mean, sometimes it's painful when you have to budget.
We could do the the one point nine to thirteen and then uh there anything, we can make that one of the one or two top priorities with any new money that might come in.
I think it's the number one priority for me.
So beyond, so not necessarily involved in the three point nine, but after that, if new money comes in, that could be one of the first things that we would apply it to would be to continue to mitigate more combos?
We we always have, we always have to keep in mind that the most important thing is to try to meet our our goals of educating our kids and the and and try to keep away as much as possible from what touches their damages their educational process.
Absolutely. That makes this this activity and this whole process of budgeting.
So it's painful.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I agree with you, but the other full side of that is we also have to look at where we're at.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. That's why I'm going along with.
And that's the hard part is realizing that we're not at that where we want to be. So.
Probably in a better position than a lot of other.
Oh, no, I I absolutely agree with that. I'm just saying that, but in in in.
And that's because we've always been realistic about it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think that's something that this board should be proud of and but also you know, unfortunately, there there does need to have some of that.
So is there consensus for at least the one point nine million?
Yes.
Yes, at least.
Okay, okay.
Hey, we'll add that to it. Now, let's let's get that added and see where we're at because that 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 got us a lot of the way there. When you're ready, Ms. King.
And I hate to say it, I need to go back to eighty two because I I I said, oh, couldn't that go to ELOP? That was a ridiculous statement. Those are full-time teachers in our district. That can't go to ELOP anyway.
No, not the teachers. I I just the in the program as far as offering um band after school. Not necessarily for the entirety of the poor teachers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the program is.
Okay, okay, okay. So I we also never finished up with number eighty eight, those S I P site allocations, that site money. Oh, we were coming back to that. Okay, never mind.
So right now we're at uh about just under six hundred thousand dollars away from our target.
You keep could keep band. So you could keep music. The music program, the band program has to do is.
But that's
That would get you there.
But that's um you're talking eighty two?
Eighty two, yes.
And those are our band teachers.
Or elementary.
Elementary.
So what I what I I guess and and I apologize, I'm not fully understanding. Are those full-time teachers right now?
Attracted teachers, yes.
And so we really, I mean, if they're tenure, they would have to go and teach something else.
Right.
Or yeah, I I would not want to consider losing the music program. That's too important to our math progress to who we are, so.
Do we have consensus to anybody?
Well, music is very important that in the learning processes, well, and that that's engaging for the students. Yeah. Yes.
I I consensus for the music poor teachers?
Music is alive and well and that's where we're at now.
Very close. Yeah. Okay, we're less than two hundred, what about less than hundred and twenty thousand dollars away now?
So um ignite, where does that fall? Is that in the?
Yeah.
Oh, good. I'm looking at this visual performing arts enrichment opportunities and I said.
That's a lot of that is the use of the Center for the Arts, like the rental, the Smart Festival.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, but for years, Reed Creek had their Smart Festival on on sites, so.
We could have.
Doesn't have to go away.
Yeah.
We could also, how much is the Smart Festival? I I remember it's in there.
Yeah, I'm bringing up that slide here for those at home and then Leonard will bring it up for here. It's like twenty seven. So these are all the Vapa costs here.
Yeah.
Everything below the dark line is what's included in that Vapa line.
So the smart supplies, that's one thing, but you know, some of these things, we also
The rentals is really like the twelve thousand for the center. That's we're talking about.
Items like that. It may be that if we really want to stay at the Center for the Arts, which I think is a wonderful thing for our students, maybe we should be going out to some of our rotaries, Kiwanis Clubs and asking them to kick in.
To sponsor.
To sponsor, to sponsor it. And asking the Center for the Arts, you know, I I as I understand it, they are very community oriented and they recognize they get support from the community and they might be willing to additionally sponsor it through a reduction.
I know that my Rotary Club would be willing to support that. I'm sure the others in town would as well.
I would hope so. So I I'm just saying that there's some of the and the smart supplies for schools. I have the feeling. Yeah. What do you think, Dr. Bar? Would some of the other Rotary Clubs be willing to kick in? Maybe as a hundred year um celebration project?
That's true.
Just, I mean, if there were any other Rotary Clubs.
I'm not the president, though, or the incoming president.
So I think Rotary Clubs are represented here and the Kiwanis has a club representative here. I think all three of us would be able to bring that forward to our clubs and I I I'd imagine a high level of success in getting some contributions.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, just as that's a small part of what we're doing, but.
It's one of those things that contributes to the entire community, supporting the arts here in Escondido. It's a major priority. Okay, so we don't have the Rotary or Kiwanis here to vote on this or to get consensus from on that particular item. Would you like us to research and see if there's other means to um those two items, the supplies for the Smart Festival and then also the concerts in the Smart Festival at the center? Addition to that, though, are the middle school supplies, music, a pair of instruments and then additional Vapa supplies. Any thoughts on either of those two items?
Some of it, couldn't some of that be incorporated into ELOP? I mean, we're we're if we're doing our smart work after school. I do, nevermind.
The middle school music program is a class during the day, not part of the ELOP program necessarily, so that would be helping the repairs of the instruments they'd be using during their band program, so it wouldn't be able to be ELOP funded.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta Yeah, there there's no way of walking away from the
Right.
middle school repairing and also supplies.
Right.
For music, so.
Well, that'd be about a hundred thousand. Got a little bit of room in there.
Right.
Want to go ahead and budget that?
We want to.
You gotta budget it. I mean, that's I I I think it's crucial. I don't see how you cannot have it.
Yeah.
We're having a program, we gotta build up, have resources to support the program.
A hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand for that? Is everybody in agreement?
What was the consensus on that?
A hundred thousand.
Hundred, so both of those bottom two items, Vapa supplies and the repairs and the upkeep of our instruments. Okay, so those two items for a hundred thousand dollars on Vapa. And then we'll go to work on our clubs here in town. I'll be speaking with our incoming president at my club and see if we can gain some support on that.
He's a jerk.
I happen to respect him highly.
The incoming president of his Rotary Club. It's me.
Oh, it's but that's what he was so quick to say.
I think we will support it. We're always looking.
All right, so we're nineteen thousand dollars away.
No, we're done. We're done.
Yes.
You need a, you need a cushion in there.
I didn't add taxes to somewhere.
Could I just ask a question? Where in what way will we be impacted if we receive the funding for the community schools grant?
We have a slide to that in a little bit.
Good to lead in to the next part.
We'll be getting into that. I have some other section of this presentation and that's one of those slides. If we can wait till then, I'd be.
That's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna go on now to the next section, if that's okay?
Yes.
Mr. Houston, okay. We're almost there. All right, now we're gonna talk about some of the things that aren't part of the governor's January proposal.
Yeah.
But if you've been keeping up with the news, there's been a lot of talk about the state budget and where it's at now, even since the January proposal. The Legislative Analyst Office, that's the agency from the state that measures the cost impacts of any new programs, revenues, all the things financial about the state. They certainly give their opinion on the state budget um and and give advice and guidance on things that they the state can do to balance that budget. There's been quite a vocal and public disagreement between the L A O, Legislative Analyst Office, and the governor when it comes to the budget outlook, including what expected revenues. And and also in the fact that the current year, uh actually because they delayed tax receipts for so long uh that the guarantee for minimum guarantee for education and funding in the state budget uh this all this education was funded by eight billion dollars more than what we should have been based on the actual tax receipts in the current year. The governor has a plan to probably borrow against the next five years um and also needs to balance the budget as it is currently. So the L A O has provided some guidance to that and they continue to send this out and becoming much more um I would say forceful about this guidance. So one of the things that they have, so I have a list of things here that are education related from the L A O's guidance and advice to the governor. One is our ELOP program across the state, many districts, most districts have a large amount of carryover from the first year, couple of years of ELOP as we were growing our program. Our annual entitlement is just about twenty two million dollars. Our currently our carryover is about fifteen million. And one of the things the L A O suggested was to look at some of that unspent money as of the beginning of next fiscal year and pull that back. Now, we have carryover right now in the books of about fifteen million from previous years, and we also have a pretty robust plan to spend most of that down. In fact, our initiatives would be to spend down as much as that as possible, so it's not available to be pulled back. Then there's the preschool expansion and where money was added to expand the preschool program. And right now, not necessarily is there a cost associated with that uh from their advice, but to pull back some of that. Uh and most of the things that I advising is to pull back things that came about in COVID. One of those was the transportation funding expansion that we've all districts have received more funding. Us, we've received, we received one point three million dollars annually now as part of that. There's a TK add-on and that's an additional amount of money that we get per TK student that is supposed to help us to fund the extra adults. It's in each of those classrooms. For us, that's about one point eight million dollars annually. They're looking at the the state currently subsidizes the uh federal uh reimbursement of the meal program, making meals free for everybody in California. Uh and so looking at maybe pulling back some of that. Now, our district has done things to provide free meals even before that subsidy happened there. Pretty confident we'd be able to continue that, but depending on what they do with this, it could change all of that. Sort of keep an eye on 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 that. And then uh the COLA going from three point nine four to point seven six wasn't enough for the L A O. They recommend, well, why not just set it all back to zero? Uh, that would be an additional one point four million dollar impact. And so the things on this list that are an annual impact would be about four and a half million dollars uh to our annual budget beyond what I've already showed you so far today.
So just add that to the five point.
Yeah, what we just did.
Yeah. To our structural deficit that already exists.
And then in uh another thing that I talked to you about, the yellow bar there, it was on those assumptions that are going to the after the January proposal. Here's our ADA chart. Uh month one is August. September, October, November, December, we hit a low point of ninety percent ADA across our district. But in January, we had a slight bounce back, didn't quite get to ninety one, but we're keeping an eye on that. We still have a couple of months to go or so before that's really made official for the current year. We're gonna watch that trend and I hope it gets backed up. Uh if it doesn't, uh we would have to make that decision in our adopted budget. That would be in June of downgrading our revenue expectations for ADA, an additional percent from, we went from ninety five to ninety four, our purse syndrome. This might mean we'd have to go from ninety four down to ninety three. Next year, the revenue impact of that, if we did that, would be about a half a million, but then a two million, because there's a pretty complicated formula to derive what our funding is for that, but those would be the potential impacts if we were to have to downgrade our our ADA to what would be more accurate. But we have a plan. Those are additional costs that aren't included in what we showed you there. Um and I'll show you kind of a little bit of what happens with that, but let's talk about this plan. So our Learning Emergency Recovery Plan, or L R F as we like to call it here, originally was funded, it was a one-time grant, one-time funding, it was funded at a twenty three million dollars. Then in the last years, but adopted budget, they cut that to twenty million uh dollars. That's in the bank right now. But because of the lawsuit in Northern California against the state, there is uh part of that settlement would be to take anything unspent, unbudgeted, they call it uh at the end of this fiscal year, so anything that's remaining, not fun, not spent next year, and now basically apply the LCAP rules to it. So then making that, which was now already right now, more or less an unrestricted very few rules on that, very full restrictions, now making it with all the restrictions that we have in our LCAP, meaning some of the things we expected to use it for wouldn't even be qualified anymore. So our recommended plan uh in order to secure that bottom, remember when we showed you the M Y P before, it was just that that last fourth year would be our third year of our adopted budget, three hundred thousand dollars more than our reserve. Danger close to being fiscally insolvent. Our our recommended plan would be to adopt a new L R F plan. Now, we brought forward before you a L R F plan before to spend that money in the current year that was for three years. So we would want to bring back to you a updated plan to re-adopt. That plan would involve spending all of our remaining L R F money in the current year. That doesn't mean creating new expenses. It means taking that money and using it to spend on our current expenses. And what that does is it creates a higher, bigger ending balance. What we would then do is ask the board to commit the resulting ending balance. Uh and I'll show you what that looks like here in a minute uh to several things, one of them being our Limitless Learning Academy. Right now, that was part of our L R F plan and is paid for in that over the next three years, but it wouldn't, we can't pay for a school using LCAP rules. And so we would want to create a commitment in our ending balance that the board would control. And only remember, we you would vote on committing that and can only be used for that purpose unless we come back and ask and and the board grants a committed in some other way. So the the board would decide how that money is spent and only the board. Uh in addition to that, we'd want to set aside money to the possible ADA adjustment uh that we're seeing, the unforeseen, any unforeseen new expenses that might come about in a district of our size that can uh that comes about quite easily. And then also the further COLA reduction that might happen. And remember, they already downgraded the COLA for the year after next as well. And if the governor is gonna pay back that eight billion dollar overage in the current year by borrowing against the next five, the only mechanism he really would have for that would be to reduce our COLAs in those years as well. So we have to prepare ourselves for what could come. By enacting this plan, it would provide us with this multi-year projection. Now, what's included in this is not just the L R F money now being spent in the current year, but also any remaining S R funds we have in in different pots, just whatever is unspent. All of that being used to spend down our expenses the current year to create as big of an ending balance as we can. That ending balance that would then grow to about twenty three point seven million dollars in the current year. And then over the course of the next three years after that, as you can see, next year and in the two other years, it'll be part of our adopted budget. Because of the deficits that are there, that five point eight million and the deficits in those other years, you see that number go from, and you see the limitless commitment come in the next year. That number there would go down, might outside the limit list, would go down from the sixteen to fifteen to fourteen million dollars there. But let's remember that slide about the four and a half million of it. But let's remember that slide about the four and a half million of additional expenses, the L A O wants the governor to adopt a budget uh to reduce our revenue by. That's thirteen, that would that would take that fourteen million down to less than one million dollars if the governor adopts a budget with the L A O's guidance in order to balance the budget. So in doing this, it would secure us against those other potential uh revenue decreases and allow us to maintain fiscal solvency and maintain the plan that we worked hard today to come to. Is there any questions on this so far? All I would need from you is direction tonight to bring back a new L R F plan as is as is described here. It seems that there's consensus on that.
Yes, I'm in agreement.
The community school. Okay, so the community school grant, somebody asked about this a little while ago. Uh we did apply for it for all of our schools here in U S D, it is a four year grant, what would come with it if we were given granted that uh funding would be a uh an M T S S or multi-tier systems of support. Uh site based grant coordinator, uh and also even uh maybe a a half position we can afford within the rest of the grant for uh behavioral academic intervention, so it'd be a way to bring back some intervention into our schools and also the professional development that goes towards all of these programs, we won't know until May that this year, whether or not we receive this grant. So that's what we know right now, it's it's with the state and we're waiting to hear back. Is there any other questions on the community grant before we move on? Okay. So next steps, so as we talked about identifying remaining S R funds and expanding all of those in the current year, that's the work we're already doing. And already looking at other ways that we can spend down the L R F money. Of course, after this, we're gonna have to communicate some of the staffing changes that we discussed tonight to all parties. March seventh is our next board meeting, not to get ahead of the agenda, you can announce it then too as well, uh we'll be presenting our second interim budget report. It'll be a very condensed version of what you've seen today. It's not gonna have all of the changes we talked about today, those won't show up until June in our adopted budget, we still have much more discussions to do, uh but that's coming up next. We're also gonna bring back uh several other budget related action items, not necessarily all on March seventh. But like I said, we're gonna, we're we're gonna need to do those commitments, that means that's more board actions uh to create those commitments and also uh work on our our current budget and the action to take around that now. We'd be bringing back now with that consensus, an updated L R F plan is described for board action to adopt that, to create that room or ending balance to be able to survive what is to come next from the state. We also, because of in order to spend down our our restor and L R F funds all in the one year, that's a large expense, all a lot of money to expend all of a sudden, it's gonna ta- touch into our LCAP. And that's gonna create a material change on some of the, not necessarily items in the LCAP, but the dollar amounts associated with them, to the point that it's gonna be a material change that requires the board to re-adopt our LCAP. And then like I said, we'll adopt our budget in June, that will include all of the plans we discussed today and anything else over the remaining board meetings that we discussed that would go into our adopted budget for next year. One of the other next steps we can say here, I'll talk about second term is the May revise, and that's when the the governor with the legislature comes back and re proposes the budget. We'll definitely be keeping an eye on that, we'll be doing the webinar in here, learning all about that, everyone here is invited. Uh and continue to discuss how we're gonna get through um this situation that we're in here financially. And then the next next slide is just questions. That's the end of the presentation.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any questions, Mark?
No, thank you for the the thorough and in-depth presentation, I know this is a lot of work and I appreciate all the information that was presented and as well as the work that went into it, so thanks to all the staff that were a part of that, I know it's quite laborious.
Done. Nothing? Joe? Nothing? And I I I also want to thank staff for all the hard work that you guys have done, this is never fun, never fun when you're coming in and you're saying we now have a deficit. And our goal is to make sure that you know, we keep as many people as possible. Keeping everybody and and have let everybody say that there's the communication that's gonna be coming out obviously from Dr. Barra. It's something that that communication will be out there, so so that no one is surprised nor are they, you know, disappointed. I mean, obviously, you're gonna have some people that are gonna be disappointed as a result of these these cuts, but ultimately, I believe that Dr. Barra is gonna continue with the communication with staff and also with everyone that's gonna be involved with this and and again, I want to thank everyone for all the work they did, that they did in preparation for this, and I'm looking forward to see how hopefully in May you know, things will hopefully be better than what we have and we won't have to take such a deep breath, so. Thank you, guys. Dr. Barrett?
Now, ag- again, I just want to thank uh thank the board, I know this is very, very difficult times um that we're in and these decisions are not done lightly. But um we will we we do need to just uh show a lot of gratitude to the people that have been with us, um to a lot of the physicians that we didn't have them if we didn't need them. But at this point, I just, you know, we'll we'll do our best to convey the appreciation that we have and we won't forget all the good work that is that has happened as a result of these positions. So uh just again, thank you for bearing with such a long presentation, I thought it was important to spend time to really just delve into the issues. So thank you.
Moving from cabinet, no, you guys did a fantastic job, thank you. Alrighty, uh our next meeting. The next regular scheduled meeting, board meeting will be held on Thursday, March seventh, twenty twenty four, seven K. Here at the Union School District, Carling Gilbert Education Center. And that being said, we are, we are adjourned.